Hey there, everybody. My name is Ricardo Martinez. I am a candidate for La Puente City Council here in the city of La Puente. I'm very happy to be doing this. Y lo haré en español, mi nombre Ricardo Martinez. Me estoy postulando para el cargo de concejal en el municipio de aquí de La Puente. And so going, going back to English. This is my first iteration of what I want to do with our city council meeting. So our city council meetings are on a bimonthly basis, so there's two a month. And we just had one this past Tuesday. And I want to talk a little bit about what just happened there and what the city council discussed. And I've also clipped a portion of, of, of the meeting to provide you with the presentation by this consultant that is working on a plan to save routes to school master plan to ensure that streets nearby schools, you know, are safe and, and are, you know, paid attention to by the city council. But there's also other important things such as comments that residents provide at the beginning of meetings. And also new business items that the city council discusses. And that, you know, requires really residents, or input rather, requires input from residents. It's really good to, to be able to know what is happening at these city council meetings. So I've clipped a few of these so that you all can watch. And I'll also talk a little bit about some of these and what the comments mean from, from residents. But this is the first of hopefully many. And if you have ideas on how to improve this, please do let me know. And if you know how to edit videos, come holla at me. But thank you. Alright, so we're gonna go over really quick these points that I want to highlight. The first were about the comments that were brought on by the public comments that were provided at the city council meeting. The first one was from Joe, who is somebody who, you know, cares very deeply about La Puente and small businesses here in La Puente. And he was criticizing the decision by the city council to essentially outsource these two food trucks instead of, you know, providing locally sourced food trucks where small businesses are here based in La Puente for an event that the La Puente City Council hosted. So it's a long-term practice by the city council to bring businesses from the outside instead of, you know, highlighting the beautiful businesses that we have here in-house in La Puente. There were also comments by two folks calling on the city to start a rent control program. So we make sure that rent does not increase every year at a very large level. The in Pomona, they recently passed in a cap of, an annual increase cap of 4%. And they were calling for that here in the city of La Puente. And we need to look at that. We need to look at how do we resolve housing insecurity here in La Puente? Because it's a big issue. A lot of families here in La Puente are, or, you know, live in households where there's family overcrowding. So there's multiple families in one house. And, and folks, that's not normal. In other communities, you do not see that. So we need to tackle that issue and make sure that we have affordable housing here in La Puente. And, and to note on that same topic, the city council approved this infrastructure program or condominium rather, that's gonna be built in downtown La Puente. So this is not the one that replaced the Star Theater. This is another one. Another one that they're building on Second and Main where that empty lot is. So they're gonna build another apartment complex where they're going to, you know, build extremely expensive units that are not even gonna be sold to the community. They're gonna try to rent these at 3,000 or more. And that's just something that should not be taking place, right? We need affordable housing like yesterday. They shouldn't be building this. They shouldn't be allowing this, but they are. So those were some really good comments. I brought on a comment about sidewalks. A particular sidewalk that is missing. We don't have a sidewalk on Angel Street from Common to, to Ferrero Lane. And also erecting a speed bump or a speed dip on, on next to Workman Elementary. Because there's been issues there where cars are going, passing or coming by, coming down the mountain on Main really fast. And, you know, there's a school there. There's children that are passing by with their parents. And somebody got run over like four years ago. So we need to address that. And I brought those points that were raised to me by residents living on Bluebonnet Street. Going to the Alta Planning presentation. So this is a consulting company. They're working on a project for the city to make streets safer for families to, you know, essentially make the streets of La Puente safer for our families. So that when families go from their home to their schools, you know, they can do so walking or biking. And there's no need for them to, you know, take a car, for example, because that's basically the norm here. And so that's about providing safer, safer streets. And this is a, a project that is going to be adopted in November. So parents and everybody else, if you want to provide input, you should go to this, you should go to these city council meetings and call the city council. And tell them, you know, where these streets, where they should allocate funding to. Because they're going to start, you know, they're designing this plan and they're going to adopt it in November. The other two items or new, there are two new businesses. They're called new businesses that the city discusses. One of them was about on-street parking options. So the city just, you know, opened the park. They've been renovating the park for a long time. They just opened it a couple weeks back. And there's the issue of parking now that there's a lot of people wanting to come to the park, not only from La Puente but from outside. They're looking to expand parking. And this is on Hacienda Boulevard, Temple and Glendora Boulevard. But then, you know, we need to provide input about how they should do that. They wanna either do expanded via parallel parking, more parallel spots, or 30-angle parking or 45-angle parking, which would be, in my opinion, a bad idea. It would just limit and, you know, make these streets even smaller. But we need to provide input about these, these plans that the city is going to be, you know, it's going to do in the future, in the near future. And the last item that was discussed was about the last pieces or what, what the city manager talked about. They're, they're looking to finish the latest renovations of the park. So this is a picnic area, barbecue area among others. And they're looking to finish by November 1st, not election-related. Sure, if you listen to the video, upcoming video, they even laughed at that because it's just nonsense. Obviously, they're doing it for election-related reasons. But, you know. But that's gonna be happening in the next couple of weeks. And apparently, they're going to also have a coffee shop. But that's not going to be done by November 1st. So be on the lookout for that. And yeah, that was basically it. Make sure you watch the upcoming videos, essentially their presentation.
I was wondering why the food truck that you're allowing to participate at the Park's community event does not have any of the current La Puente license, sales sticker on their vehicle, or an LA County truck tag, or any current LA County Health Department grades. From what you see on their truck, it's back from 2018. So it's either two things. They're either using the truck's old tag of their grade, which you shouldn't be allowed to do so, or they're using an old business gray tag. So this truck has been there more than one time. So I'm wondering why hasn't this been noticed or requested by any city official that's been going there? There was pretty much about a year or two that we were concerned about Health Department codes and everything. But sure enough, we have a lunch truck that continually goes to this, goes to this event. And the code enforcement says to me, "Oh, we use them all the time, nonchalantly." Not unaware of what's going on or not seeing anything that's visible. And also, does the community have a liaison? I know Roxanne was trying to build that relationship with businesses before she resigned. After the night, the National Night Out of La Puente, businesses were messaging me and wanting to know how could they have been involved? Because all they saw were Allstate Insurance, a karate, and a lot of local Catholic organizations. This is just like the 4th of July event. And one business told me that they called the city to participate. And they told them that they couldn't sell food or beer because they didn't have a beer tap to serve beer. Which is kind of ridiculous because you could rent one of those at any Bevmo. So I think any business who's trying to advertise their own business in a community event should be allowed and not just be picked by council members or certain city officials of their wantings. It's really horrible to explain and, and hearing that the businesses are being excluded. Any business can, like I said, could rent taps and sell their own product. This just makes it look like you're only choosing certain businesses that you guys wanna use or frequent with. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Joe. Have a good evening. Any other speakers?
Mayor, we have three ecomments that we received this evening that I'll go ahead and read into the record. The first comment is from Edgar Reyes. "I support HLPUSD Board Rep Serrano's call for rent control and an annual rent increase cap of 4%. Forty percent of our residents are renters who face rising costs of housing and other necessities for a safe and dignified life. Rent control is the surest way to protect these neighbors. The economic fallout that followed the pandemic forced some of our neighbors who lived here for years to move to less expensive cities in different counties and states. The houses' population here rose six times. We need to keep our city intact. Rent control will help these families from being displaced by the high cost of living. The housing crisis is not due to a scarcity of housing. It is due to the high price of housing. We cannot expect the development of market rate housing like the one being constructed in place of the old Star Theater to resolve the crisis. Most of us will be unable to afford the high price of the units. We need rent control if we are to improve LP and help those struggling to find housing."
Thank you for that comment.
Our second comment is from Max. "I'm a community member and La Puente, excuse me, I'm a community member of La Puente that is strongly urging for LP's city council to push for rent control of a 4% rent increase cap. Pomona's city council just passed rent control on their area, capping rent increases at 4%. This protects 18,000 households. Landlords also can't evict without just cause. This is a huge win for Pomona and it would be equally momentous if La Puente were to do the same. La Puente has a poverty rate of 12.9%. Residents here are in general struggling to get by, as is. Neighboring, neighboring cities such as Hacienda Heights have companies like Lennar who are building luxury condominiums and have recently stated they are not willing to create affordable housing units. There are also condominium projects in our city as well. This is a dangerous trend that must be recognized prior to the consequences taking effect. If rents continue to be increased, then our community is at risk of being driven out and left with nowhere to go. We urge you to pass rent control."
Thank you for that comment.
Our final ecomment this evening is from Ricardo Martinez. "Good evening, everyone. My name is Ricardo Martinez and I'm a resident of La Puente. As some of you may know, I am running for city council in La Puente and have been speaking with our residents about their needs and priorities. One of them is the lack of speed bump or speed dip on Main Street adjacent to Workman Elementary. Our students at Hacienda-La Puente Unified School District recently started school and it is imperative we keep them safe. A woman and her kid years ago were hit by a car while crossing the street on Main Street and Bluebonnet. When will the city council act to ensure the speed bump or speed dip becomes a reality? Additionally, residents on one part of Enyo from Common Avenue to Ferrero Lane have for years asked for a sidewalk but have heard nothing. I'm asking city council to seriously consider these concerns from residents and start looking into the process of constructing a sidewalk from Common Avenue to Ferrero Lane. Thank you."
If you all were here in February of last year, that's obviously, it's been a couple of long years in many ways. And we'll get into a summary of the project. This is an educational update tonight. We're planning to come back maybe in October or November for a formal adoption. And we'll discuss those steps in a little bit. Good evening again. I'm Ryan Johnson with Alta Planning. I'm in the downtown Los Angeles office. And I do want to highlight that our, our sub consultants and partners at ActiveSGV were very involved throughout the project as well. I'm gonna give them credit for helping us with a lot of the community engagement. Next slide, please. So just a rehash of some of the goals and the background that we discussed last year. The main goal is really the last bullet there. I mean, the whole point of this is to make it safer for families traveling to and from schools. The, the woman's comment at the beginning of the meeting tonight was a nice segue for me. Yeah, we, we got lots of feedback from the community about very micro-level improvements folks were looking for. But we, we really wanted this to be a more thorough, comprehensive plan that kind of takes all of those ad hoc improvements and studies that the city's been conducting throughout the years and really put it together in one document. This, this is strategic to help get funding in the future. And some of the other backgrounds, we, we were also involved in a regional active transportation plan a few years ago. And that looked at citywide at bicycle and pedestrian improvements. But this study we're talking about tonight is focused right around the school campuses. Next, please. So this is an outline of the planned document, but it follows the scope of work. And you can see the bolded headers there, really the process we followed throughout. The first part was just listening to the community. The second was learning. And that was looking at existing data, where crashes were happening, getting out in the field and actually studying conditions on the ground. And then the third and fourth there are the leadership part of the plan and the city taking the next steps to make those improvements. Next. As I mentioned, we conducted a survey. So throughout the first half of the project, the survey was open and it closed in February of this year. We had almost 800 responses, which is, was pretty good for a community this size. We were happy with that. And about a quarter of those were conducted in Spanish. So that showed that we were happy to have a diverse group of folks respond. This is just one question I had up here highlighting that almost 40%, or between 30 and 40% of parents responded that they, they only live a quarter mile from the schools, which is a very walkable distance. But almost 70% of the students do go by car. So that's one thing we're, we're also trying to address is encouraging more families to feel safer and comfortable letting their kids walk or bike to school, especially for the older students. Next. In addition to the survey, we, we also had an online mapping tool. You know, due to COVID restrictions, we really wanted to beef up the virtual engagement options. So we, we allowed people to go online. This also closed in February. And people were putting comments throughout the city. We had several dozen. And people could also sort of upvote comments that they agreed with. You can go to the next slide, please. As things were starting to get a little safer, we, we did have our engagement team at ActiveSGV go out to all the schools. So we set up in front of the school gates in the morning and in the afternoons. We did two at each school. Just interacting with parents as they came in, talking about the plan and getting their input. We had two virtual workshops. One was in September of last year and then another in February this year. And then we also conducted some focus interviews with key constituent groups, including crossing guards. So those were very enlightening. And then finally, we just wanted to mention, we also did a robust social media campaign. We sent out 40,000 text messages as well, pointing people to the surveys. So that's, that's almost, you know, one, one per person in the city. So that was quite a blanket campaign. And we mailed physical flyers out to 8,000 addresses in the city. So I'd say in comparison to other projects we worked on in other cities, this was one of the most robust engagement campaigns. Then as far as collecting data, we, in addition to publicly available data, we did go out and do bicycle and pedestrian counts around the schools. We added this to counts that we had already gathered in the bicycle plan back in 2017 or 2018. So we have a robust set of actual data from the street. Next. This is really the, the highlight of the plan is getting out there and looking at conditions with city staff. We can see John joining here. We also, we would often have school staff, including principals or vice principals, joining us when they were available. The, the point of this was to go during school drop-off and pickup periods to observe traffic conditions. You often, you're probably all aware, a lot of the concerns happen at that period when, when drivers are interacting with students who are, are walking. So we looked at that and then we went on to walk around the campus and looked at physical infrastructure deficiencies. Next. So what this all culminates in is a series of recommendations. We originally intended to do a series of recommendations per school for each of the 16 schools in our study. But we, we determined that since many of the schools are really right next to each other in some cases, it made more sense to cluster them. And this also serves as, this is beneficial when you're applying for grant applications to show that schools are coordinating with each other. And the funders know that they're basically gonna get more, more impact for their funding when you do multiple schools at one time. So this is one sample of what these maps are looking like. And we will have a series of these. Next, please. Just zooming in, showing what this looks like. We were identifying where crossing improvements could be made. Some of the linear improvements there, the orange lines are sidewalk gaps. So that, those are showing where there are no sidewalks currently. So we actually identified every segment where there was no sidewalk and recommended those for, for backfill eventually. And then the purple line there is showing a bikeway improvement next to Bassett High School. Next. This is just a summary of the types of facilities we considered. These are pedestrian improvements and many, if not all of these are, are present somewhere in the city of La Puente. The last one there, traffic calming, we were showing an example, traffic circle. But you know, over and over again at the schools, people were complaining about speeding traffic on a lot of the residential streets next to schools. So rather than, you know, putting in signals where they're maybe not warranted, physical, vertical infrastructure like traffic, or traffic calming and speed humps could help with that speeding concern. Next slide. Similarly, for bicycle improvements, these are just some examples. And I can answer questions later about any of these. Next. In addition to those infrastructure maps, we're also commissioned to develop a map like this for each school that shows based on existing infrastructure and not, not what's planned for the future. But just on infrastructure that's there now, what we suggest are the safest walking routes to that school. And kind of the icons that you're seeing there that are hard to see on the screen, those are where crossing signals or stop signs do exist. So we're trying to route families to go those routes as much as possible. And if there are crossing guards, we definitely want to direct people to those intersections. So these are, that's what we're working on now. You'll see that. The next time we present, those will be finalized. Next, please. And then in addition to the infrastructure, we, we don't want to forget the sort of soft or non-infrastructure components of mobility. And those are education, making sure folks are aware of the types of facilities and how to use them. There are, there is funding available for everything you see on the screen and more, including marketing campaigns targeted at drivers to behave in a more safe manner around schools. But also going into the campuses themselves and doing bicycle and pedestrian safety trainings for students. And then on the bottom right, that was a campaign we, we did in Santa Ana where we gave out bike lights to folks. We would essentially intercept riders who didn't have lights at night and just inform them of the law and provide them the lights to actually be in compliance. So rather than enforcing, trying to educate folks first. Next. So finally, we'll, we'll wrap up the report with implementation strategies. And I'll, I'll work closely with Abraham and John on, on these. And we've already, you know, we're aware of the capital improvement program in the city and how some of these projects could be implemented during that process. So we'll be looking for opportunities, you know, whenever a street's being rehabilitated or repaved, some simple striping and signage improvements could go in at that time. I also want to point out that we, we were in touch with LA County Public Works throughout the project. They were, they've been very engaged. And I'm, I'm glad to report that they actually reached out to me at various points during their own projects in some of the unincorporated areas and asked if there was feedback we were getting that could inform their own improvements, including on some of the schools in the northwest part of the city, the northern edge. Next. This is a teaser for Abe's presentation that's coming up at a future meeting. But as I mentioned, the, the whole point of this is to get grant funding and make improvements. We didn't wait until the plan was done. There was a, a big statewide funding cycle earlier this year that we, we helped Metro's consultant that was writing the grant and city staff. We all coordinated and made sure that our safe routes to school plan could inform this application. And so that, that was submitted and Abe's gonna provide more details on that later. But that was, that was very, very exciting to cluster some schools and improvements around them into that application. I'll wrap up here. The next steps, as I mentioned, we're coming back to you later this fall with a plan that we, we hope is ready for adoption. And if you all are interested in seeing a draft of that before, we'll work something out. I'll talk with John about that process. But moving forward after that, it's really about finding the grant sources and going for the money. And in addition to infrastructure grants, there are a lot of multi-benefit grants out there, including from stormwater bonds that can fund water capture and so that we can, you know, as sidewalks and other things are being implemented, we can look for opportunities to put in stormwater capture features and landscaping. There's a lot of clean air and environmental sources out there as well that could go to projects like this. And then the source that John mentioned earlier, the Highway Safety Improvement Program can fund a lot of these as well. So I'll, I'll stop there and take questions.
Is that John?
Hi, Mayor. The city council, I need to change my glasses. It's tough getting old. This evening, we're gonna present to you some options for on-street parking. Kind of as a result of our success with the La Puente Park improvements. Build it and they will come. And they, they are coming. So I think it was a couple of meetings ago, actually, the city council, I think it was Councilmember Alcudro, asked about, you know, some considerations given to allow or make changes to the streets around the park to provide additional on-street parking. And actually, staff had started that process a few months ago back. And we got a little bit distracted with some other projects and improvements we were working on. So with me this evening is Bob Birch from Willdan Engineering from the Traffic Engineers Office, who has helped develop and, and put together these concept plans that we're gonna walk you through this evening to give you, to give us some feedback and direction of maybe one or two or none that you might want us to look into a little bit further and give us some direction and feedback. So with that, onto the next slide, please. So just to tell you what we looked at, obviously, we're all familiar with the park and where it's located. So we particularly focused on Hacienda Boulevard running north and south, Temple Avenue running east and west, and then of course Glendora running north and south, bordering and around the perimeter of the park to look at basically what parking is permitted to there today or not permitted today. And what we could do to add additional parking there based on various considerations that Bob Birch might comment upon as we looked at alternatives and options for your review. Next slide. So this one's starting on Hacienda Boulevard. And what we did here, even though Hacienda runs north and south, on your screen here and in, in, on your handout in front of you, it's running left and right. But we all know that it does run north and south. On the actual depiction of the roadway, the red areas that are highlighted in red along the curb are existing red, meaning no parking. And if there's any green that's highlighted, if you notice on that top portion at the top, there's actually some green to allow for some parking in front of those two single-family homes. If it's green, that means it's permitted or allowed today. And then if it's blue, that's where we're recommending or at least showing consideration could be given to add additional parking. And here on Hacienda Boulevard, because of the roadway configuration and lane restrictions, we're only proposing for consideration to possibly add some parallel on-street parking along that side on Hacienda Boulevard that's immediately adjacent to the park. If you notice on this, on both the, the upper portion of Hacienda on top of the slide as well as the lower portion, you'll see that blue line running along the school district parking lot there on the top portion. And then going down to the second portion on the, on the slide of the street segment, you'll see it's the parking lot there on Hacienda. So based on this scenario, you, we could add 30 additional on-street parking spaces in a parallel parking configuration, if this was something the city council would be interested in for us to pursue and go into, and, and to allow this to occur here and modify the current restricted parking that is painted red there today as no parking.
Mr. Demaria?
Yes.
Can you tell us the total parking availability for the park that currently exists?
You know, I wish I had that number. I do not know that number.
I think it'd be important to know in order to determine what is the percentage of increase in parking availability that this is going to happen versus the impact of putting vehicles on Hacienda Boulevard potentially in a very high-traffic area. I know that's 40 miles an hour, but really realistically, people are not traveling at 40 miles an hour down Hacienda Boulevard.
Right.
And people coming out of there. Another quick observation is that, looking at these maps, I'm seeing that the whole length of Hacienda, almost from, you know, within maybe 100 feet from Nelson to Temple, it's, that's the area of concentration of 30 potential parallel park, parking options, correct?
So the parallel parking options on the very top portion, it starts north of Nelson as you approach the, in front of the school district parking lot.
The school district parking lot, which is...
That blue band.
Right, which is very close to Nelson. It's not, not too far, right? So you, you're taking about two-thirds of Hacienda Boulevard? That, that strip?
Maybe not quite two-thirds, but...
Maybe 55, 60%?
Perhaps, yeah. That's a continuation, those two pieces are, if you were layup, you know, side by side, it's a continuation as you head north on Hacienda, yes. To Pritchard and then past Pritchard. Correct.
Is there a reason why we didn't do the same length on Glendora? Where it's less traffic and, to me, it'd probably be safer?
To take it further down Glendora towards Nelson?
Yes. Because we only stopped at the community center, right?
I think we took it, we took it past the high school parking lot for the football stadium, I believe. And we can get to that slide towards the end. We'll, we'll address that then if we can.
The number one thing is like knowing the, the impact of how many parkings we currently have to what. I would like to know that number.
Okay, we can definitely get that number. I was, I'm trying to guess. And I, I know we, obviously, when we, when we reconfigured the parking lots and connected them, we gained maybe 40 to 50 stalls, I believe. But I, I do not have that total parking count number. So, so again, on Hacienda Boulevard, this is the only consideration. You're gonna see different options on the, on Glendora and Temple, which we'll get to here in a moment. But here on Hacienda Boulevard, it's just a consideration of parallel parking adjacent to the, to the park side slash school side. Next slide, please. So here in Glendora, we have two options. One is 30% angled parking, sorry, on Temple, 30% angled parking. On the next slide, we're gonna talk about 45% angled parking. If you notice here on the parking stall count, we have existing, 19 existing on-street parking provided, which is in parallel format. And you see the addition of the angled 30% blue parking stalls that would bring that number up to 30. So in this configuration, if considerations given to reduce a traffic lane, if you notice there, Temple Avenue would, would pinch down or be reduced to a lane in each direction from Glendora on the east side to Hacienda on the west side. And that would produce a net 11 additional parking stalls, both on the north side of Temple as well as the south side of Temple, as noted on, on this segment. Again, just as an option, if the council wanted to further have us look into this consideration or configuration for an additional 11 spots. Because the parallel parking ones on that south side of the park on that lower diagram would go away to allow for that angled parking. Next slide, please. This is the same stretch of Temple, again, being reduced to a travel lane in each direction, but with 45-degree angled parking on Temple. So you would gain a total of 45 parking spots. It's a net 26 based on the 19 that we have there today as on-street parallel. I do want to make a notation on that lower portion of the diagram or the street segment. You see that crosswalk that we've added there at Santo Oro. If we're gonna, particularly on this one versus the prior one, if we're gonna add additional angled parking on that north side of Temple, we would recommend that you put in this, this crosswalk with a flashing beacon system. Because human nature for folks that are parking on the north side, they're probably not gonna want to walk down to Glendora or, or Hacienda to cross at those traffic signals. And they would probably attempt to or want to or be tempted to jaywalk across the street. So with this particular scenario, and even the prior one at the 30% angled parking, consideration would be given to add that crosswalk to provide for a better or more safe crossing for folks parking on the north side. parking on the north side. Another option too, as you look at this, is to not, I guess, make the change on the north side? Yeah, so you could not park on the north side and just park on the south side adjacent to the park, and then you would not have to add that crosswalk or safe crossing for them to come across the street. Next slide, please. So this is the final consideration or option for Temple, which would not do any angled parking. It would just be to add some additional parallel parking. You'll see it there on the south side of the street, so it's the lower portion of the, both the lower and the upper street segment, but on the lower half of the street adjacent to the park, you'll see that green band that could add additional on-street parallel parking along Temple, and that would gain us about, or it would gain us 10 more stalls, just 10, from 19 to 29. So it would be a net gain of 10 stalls. Under this configuration, you do not pinch down Temple Avenue to have just a single traffic lane in each direction. You would maintain the, all four travel lanes. So of the three options or considerations that we developed along Temple, the one with the 45-degree angle, the previous one, would gain us the most at 26. Next slide, please, on the Glendora one. And we'll get to your question, Councilmember Ogudo, I think, as we get to the second or third slide here on Glendora. So looking at Glendora, we again applied or looked at a 30% angled parking on Glendora, and you'll see you're only netting six additional spots adjacent to the park. Because of the angle and the narrowness of Glendora, we were rather limited of what we could do here. So again, you're only gaining six spots on this one. I think it's staff's opinion or belief for six spots, it might not be worth it, so to speak. Next slide. This is the same scenario, but with 45-degree angled parking, so you get additional two more, you get to eight. And I do want to highlight, if you look there at the ingress and egress into the community center, right there by Hill Street, there's a notation there that you might not be able to read that says additional nine stalls if no right turn on red is restricted at the driveway. So if we, if one of these angled parking scenarios was appealing to the city council to implement, we could add some additional on-street parking there if we restricted the right turns on red, which would mean, if you're familiar with coming in and out of the community center, a lot of folks do and can legally turn and make a right turn coming out on red. But if we were to add additional on-street parking there or try to do that, we would have to eliminate that right turn on red. So folks, folks that might not want to wait in line for the light to turn green to come out of the community center would have to go to the other driveway to the north, they're closer to St. Joseph's School, and come out there and make their right turn. Otherwise, they would probably be at more of a single queue line there at the community center for folks either going right or left, which is not how it is right now. You can come out and make a right turn and go southbound, or you can wait for the signal and go northbound. And then this slide here for parallel, and Councilmember Ogudo, this gets to your question or comment, I believe. So this is allowing for parallel parking on Glendora. It would gain us plus 22 or net additional 22 spots by allowing on-street parking, starting down by Nelson. If you notice on the top segment or the top portion of the, on the slide, there's 11 new additional stalls where we have some blue highlighted there. There's existing green there and some red, but we would allow for additional on-street parking down by Nelson. Some additional on-street parking there at the high school stadium parking lot, and that will continue up to the community center, and it would break for a bit, not having enough space to add additional parallel parking, but it would pick up again there by St. Joseph's as you go to that second street segment or the lower one and get close to the Temple intersection. Of note here, there is restricted parking currently today during school hours. There's no parking from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on school days, and so even though we might be able to add additional three parking spaces in parallel along that portion or segment, they would still have that restricted parking during the week on school days. Obviously, however, when activities might be significant and heavy at the park on weekends, then those restrictions don't apply, and you would benefit from a net 22 additional spots on Glendora. So that kind of takes us through the different options that staff came up with. Depending on which option, if you'd like any one of these or any combination thereof, or if you want to send us back to the drawing board with some other thoughts and ideas that we didn't consider. If you consider or look at the angled parking on Glendora and either the 30% or 45% angled parking that reduces that to two lanes of travel, that will require additional further study on our part from some of the, more of the traffic impacts, because traffic coming on Temple from, we're going east or west, they're going to pinch down to a single travel lane, and we would want to do a little more analysis on those intersections and see what that does to the flow of traffic coming through Temple going east and west, if you look at either one of those two angled parking scenarios. If it's just parallel parking on Temple, then that would not apply.
John, a couple of quick questions. First of all, thank you for at least looking at all these options, because I know that I've had this conversations with staff for quite a few months now, because I figured once our park was all done, that we would definitely have some issues with parking, and so far, we've kind of worked around it, but definitely we need to enhance the parking. The parking on Hacienda, and I think, I think you were with me when we kind of, one day we, I kind of dragged you along a little bit and had you take a look at the parallel parking on Hacienda. You have the driveway entrance, which is the most northerly on Hacienda, which I know I kind of said, if we, if we started a car length or two prior to that, you know, going south, from there, we could, we could basically park along the curb all the way to the maintenance buildings of the school district. And in some ways, this is what you're, and some of this is what you're showing, I think.
That is, that is true, except for, and maybe we can go back to that first slide, which is labeled H. The addition or allowance for the parallel on-street parking starts south of that northern driveway, where that blue bar is or blue line is.
And you need to start south of it, because shortly thereafter, people are transitioning into the turn lane. So it would make sense, I mean, to do it that way.
Go ahead and use that microphone.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is I think, I, from being there and looking at it and observing it, I think that would be a great spot to add on additional parking from, along Hacienda Boulevard.
Yeah, so when we, sorry, when we looked at the driveways, especially with Hacienda and the speeds on Hacienda, that, actually, the northerly driveway and even on the southerly driveway, we looked at site distance. So we don't want to bring parked cars too close to the driveway, mainly for site distance, so we looked at 119 feet would be proper site distance for everybody coming out of the park, because it's going to be a highly-used parking lot. Same thing with the lower driveway coming out of that, if they come out of there, again, we looked at site distance, and that's where we started the on-street parking, to make sure that the site distance met minimum requirements.
Because Temple scares me more than Hacienda. I mean, that traffic on, people coming down Temple are going pretty fast, especially if they're going east or west. I mean, it's, they're building up some speed, and I think being over there in Hacienda from what we observed, it looks like that it would be more tolerable. But also, I know another thing that I had mentioned, I think I had mentioned it to David at one time, was from the entrance of the service road on Glendora Avenue to the school, from that service road, down to, there's a, there's a southerly entrance also into the parking lot for the school district, doing diagonal parking there all the way down. Now, if you did that, we'd have to make Glendora Avenue into a two-lane, which probably would not upset some of the homeowners here, because naturally, again, people are usually driving 60, 70 miles an hour on Glendora Avenue. And you do have school crossings there for kids, which would actually slow traffic down, I think, again. But I think it's a good spot to look at, because, you know, it's additional parking for the park. I'm not saying we couldn't come up with some other areas, which we are, but I'm saying that I was looking at, and again, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, traffic engineer, but just observing it, I would think that if you're coming, if you're coming south on Glendora Avenue and you stop at Temple, and then you transition through, I would leave, and granted, there, there you're going to start going into two lanes, but I would leave one lane open, the right-hand, you need a transition lane to turn into the park. So you'd have a right-hand lane to turn into the park, and you'd have your lane to go through, your through lane, which would, you'd be going south, and you have a through lane coming north. And possibly, and again, I don't have any idea, but seeing we talked about bike paths, maybe there's a possibility of, if we did diagonal parking there, it went to two lanes, maybe we could put a bike lane down the center of that also. So I'm just saying it's something I think that I'd like you to look at, you know, in the long run, because there could be some opportunities there. And also, I would say to you that I wouldn't mind, after these discussions, maybe myself or as a whole, if the whole council wants to go or individually, walk the entire site. And I think visually, it's something also that would help our, our understanding and our, and our thoughts and, like I said, you know, David's concerned about Hacienda, about the speed of the traffic, which is absolutely correct, but like I said, I look at it and I'm thinking, hey, it's a lot safer than it is on Temple, and I actually parked there, because we have one parking spot, I think, on Hacienda, right by one of the, by the southerly exit. So I actually parked there one time and coming in and out, cars going by, and I thought, you know, I could see other people parking there, and it seemed like it'd be a safe area. So like I said, I wouldn't mind walking with staff, so. Valerie, you have something?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, me too. We talked about the park so much that I was a... Update discussion in the direction regarding current and upcoming projects at La Puente